Please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas.
Here.
Alderman Garza.
Here.
Alderman Masiacos. Alderman Donnell.
Here.
Alderman Franco.
Here.
Alderman Seville.
Here.
Alderman Hart Burns. Alderman Smith.
Here.
Alderman Bug.
Here.
Alderman Lobshi.
Here.
Alderman Jenkins. Alderman O'Connor.
Here.
Mayor Irvin.
Present. Please rise, we have a moment of silence in honor of our active service men and service women, as well as our veterans. Please remain standing as we say the pledge of allegiance to be followed by the invocation led by Mayor N. Lopez. Moment of silence. I pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic of the United States, one nation, under thy, indivisible, and eternal.
Let's borrow our hats. To your heavenly father, we thank you for life, we thank you for family, we thank you for friends, and we are so grateful for such a beautiful community. Uh, thank you for letting us gather here today, uh, in celebration of so many wonderful things among our community. We ask you that you bless our leaders in the community, our volunteers. Uh, thank you for allowing us, uh, to have individuals like Mr. Emilio Barrios in our community. God, we ask you that you bless our event that's about to come, uh, this weekend. We ask you that you bless our beautiful island. You know the turmoil that our island is going through. We ask you that you stay with us. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion to approve the minutes of Tuesday, July 9, 2019, City Council meeting? Motion made by Alderman Hart Burns, second by Alderman Franco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
The appointment of sergeant-at-arms for this meeting? Motion made by Alderman Hart Burns, second by Alderman Franco. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried by voice vote. Before we begin the presentation, I just want to announce a special meeting of the Aurora City Council on this coming up Thursday, July 25th, immediately following the finals meeting at 3:00 P.M. As you saw, uh, in my public calendar published yesterday, this special meeting was already scheduled, but we have revised the agenda to include another resolution. Initially, a plan for the first city council meeting in August, August 13th. On the agenda will be the resolution to distribute the Aurora Strong Fund, which are currently being processed. As stated today in the Aurora Beacon News, the goal was to complete the process of the checks and distribute in mid-August after our finance department completed processing the donations and proper documents of each disbursement check. Because we have an opportunity to have another full city council meeting prior to August 13th, we'll go ahead and expedite the original process. Again, thank you, the whole community, for raising more than $500,000 for the Aurora Strong campaign. The decision to keep the campaign open longer than initially planned resulted in a significant amount more, uh, money being donated through special fundraisers that will all benefit the families and victims of, uh, the Pratt shooting. So again, thank you guys very much for everything you did, and we look forward to, uh, cutting, uh, and donating these checks to, to the families. Mr. Mohammed, will you start with our presentations?
Good evening, Mayor, to the city council. Tonight, we are honoring community members, we're honoring city staff, we're honoring some of our youngest, and some of the seniors in the community who helped to lead us. Tonight, we'll ask the mayor to step down on our altar, one of the seventh ward, because our first honoree comes from her ward. A student at STEAM Academy, this young lady became the youngest ever to compete and complete the 30-mile bike-to-drive challenge in Chicago. Gentlemen, if you could please welcome Starlisha Fuse. Starlisha participated in the 18th Annual Bike-to-Drive Event with over 20,000 participants. About 2,000 riders went home with a medal, Starlisha being one of them, and the youngest one ever in the history of the event. She biked a total of 30 miles, roughly six and a half hours. She had many motivations. First, she was determined to support her uncle, who was diagnosed with an irreversible respiratory dysfunction about two years ago. She was also motivated to show children of all ages that you can do anything you put your mind to. What's next? She's training for her first 5K in September. Big round of applause for Starlisha Fuse. She is also receiving one of Alderman Hart Burns' Phenomenal Young Woman Awards. I believe Starlisha had something to share with the audience. You can step to that mic right to your left, Starlisha.
Hello, everyone. I want to thank you all for coming tonight, and I want to thank the city of Aurora for letting me be in the 3rd of July parade. And I want to thank my grandpa family and friends for supporting me and everything I do in life. And I want to just inspire others my age to know, anything you put your mind to, you can do anything. Thank you, I'm done.
Starlisha Fuse, from the Benetton STEAM Academy, the youngest person ever to complete the 5th Bike-to-Drive Challenge on Lacer Drive in Chicago. Very proud of you, Starlisha. We give her another round of applause as she takes the lead. Mom is here, grandpa's here, the legendary Jerry Jones. Very proud. So thank you, you can pray, Mr. Emilio Barrios. Joining him, longtime friend Alderman Mon Garza, Alderman Hart Burns, and any other Alderman would have joined, please come on down. The mayor will read the proclamation.
It is my great honor to read the proclamation. Emilio Barrios Day, May 22nd. Whereas Emilio Barrios was born in 1920 in Barranquitas, Puerto Rico, and arrived in Chicago in June 1951 with just $3 in his pocket. And whereas he paid 50 cents for a taxi to Aurora to join the small Puerto Rican community and just 13 people at the time, and began, um, what he did to empower 68 years of life and leadership. And whereas Barrios began his activism as a factory worker at the Aurora Paperboard Factory, and took a stand against unfair and unjust working conditions by fighting for the rights of Latino workers at the factory and other companies in Aurora. And whereas he met, he went on to make history by being elected president of the local chapter of the United Mine Workers of America, and joined first forces with Marie Wilkinson to secure more employment opportunities for Latinos at Caterpillar and Western Electric. And whereas Barrios has been an empowering figure in Aurora's Latino community, known as Don Mio, and the pioneer of Latino rights and the workforce, and will serve as the Grand Marshal of the 2019 Aurora Puerto Rican Heritage Parade on Sunday, Ju- July 28th. Now therefore, I, Richard C. Irvin, Mayor of the City of Aurora, commend Mr. Barrios for his decades of service and do hereby proclaim his birthday, May 22nd of each year, from this point on, as Emilio Barrios Day in Aurora.
A round of applause for our Grand Marshal. Can we mention he's 99 years old? Don Mio, the labor leader, civil rights leader, works right alongside Mrs. Wilkinson for rights, equity, and justice for Latino workers here in Aurora. Keep the applause going for our 2019 Grand Marshal, being comparable to Emilio Barrios.
Well, I can't talk so good English, but all I can do, I say, "Thank you very much, each of you guys, whoever is here with the bottom of my heart." I say thank you to everybody, and I'm glad to be here today, since I got 100 D.R.
Mr. Emilio Barrios, pioneer, patriot of Aurora, Puerto Rican.
Down, we're about 70 years, I live in Aurora, and I help what I can, what I can with my heart, and everybody, I helped, I was the president of the union for 12 years in Aurora Paperboard, and I helped, that is what I can there. I helped, I went to Washington DC to help represent all the Spanish people, and I know all the Spanish people, and everyone who can. And I was named in 1964 here in Aurora, like Human Health Commission with Mrs. Wiggerson, and I helped her, with her, I can help a lot of people around the town, no matter where they come from, but everybody needs my help, and I'm glad I'm here yet, and I say that into tomorrow, that's all in my life. Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Emilio Barrios. For our community parade also. Keep the applause going as Mr. Barrios takes the seat. The parade on Sunday at 2:00. Next, this past Saturday, we raised the Puerto Rican flag here at City Hall, kicking off Aurora Puerto Rican Heritage Week in Aurora. But we will conclude with the parade on Sunday, where Mr. Barrios will lead in the festival right across the street here at Water Street Square. Congratulations to the Aurora Puerto Rican Cultural Council, Iris Miller, Mary Rivera, the entire team, on successfully raising more than $20,000 to make this parade happen. The mayor is going to present a proclamation, but before we do that, we want to introduce Iris Miller to please come down as our president, who will introduce some of our young royalty who are here as well. Please give a round of applause.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for being here with us today. Uh, we are very honored to be here, and we're very thankful of all the support from the city of Aurora, Mayor Irvin, and every, each of you that are here today, um, who, with your continued support, help us to make it happen this year for our festivities. So thank you very much. Um, I'm going to call up our Miss Puerto Rico of Aurora 2019, Giselle Torres. First runner-up, Zoe Moreno. Second runner-up, Valiana Stinson. Miss Barrantitas, Vanessa Martinez. Miss Little Puerto Rico of Aurora, Deanna Loft. Miss Little Adesivo, Isabella Montañez. And Miss Little Kamui, Delmi Hernandez.
Round of applause for all of our queens. For our Miss and the Queen, we have the number one trophy. And for our little miss, we have the Mayor's Award of Excellence as well. We'll see them in the parade on Sunday and at the festival on Sunday afternoon and evening. If the entire rest of the team can come up to the Aurora Puerto Rican Cultural Council as the mayor issues the proclamation.
This proclamation is for the Aurora Puerto Rican Heritage Week, Saturday, July 20th through Sunday, July 28th, 2019. Whereas the late Doroteo Oroya and Juan M. Huberte founded this movement more than 50 years ago in 1967, under the name of United Puerto Rican Parade Committee. And in 1988, the organization adopted the name Aurora Puerto Rican Cultural Council, Incorporated, to help identify its new diversity, but same goals and commitments. And whereas the APRCC's mission is to encourage and promote Puerto Rican heritage through culture, ethnic, and civic activities, designed to educate the community, and whereas the APRCC has anchored itself in the community through its service and signature events, such as the Miss Puerto Rico of Aurora Contest, the APRCC Scholarship Program, the annual raising of the Puerto Rican flag at Aurora City Hall, and the APRCC Heritage Festival and Parade. And whereas the APRCC continues its impact and legacy as the 47th Annual Aurora Puerto Rican Heritage Parade Festival, which has gone back to its roots in the heart of downtown Aurora. And this year, the Grand Marshal will be Labor and Civil Rights Leader, Emilio Barrios. Now therefore, I, Richard C. Irvin, Mayor of the City of Aurora, do hereby recognize the contribution of the Aurora Puerto Rican Cultural Council to our city, and do hereby proclaim July 20th through July 28th, 2019, as Aurora Puerto Rican Heritage Week in the city of Aurora.
Remind you that the parade kicks off at noon at the corner of Benton and Broadway on Sunday, and the fest goes until 8:00 P.M. at Water Street Square. Looking forward to the 47th Annual Puerto Rican Parade and Festival after raising $20,000 successfully to make sure to have it. Great job to the Aurora Puerto Rican Cultural Council. Well done! You helped me well, Laura, you helped me well. Mayor, we still have a few more. Thank you to Alderman Hart Burns and Alderman Garza. Each quarter, we recognize staff members at our quarterly staff recognition here at City Council. We have an amazing team doing some great work. On Monday, June 17th, Bloomberg Philanthropies named Aurora one of the top 10 most engaged cities in the world. Aurora is ranked as the top finalist because of the efforts led by the City of Aurora's Neighborhood Group Support Team to create and enhance the capacity of neighborhood groups and to organize community events that build trust between residents and police, such as National Night Out and Neighborhood Connection Events. The number of active neighborhood groups in Aurora has doubled over the past two years. We're top 10, but tomorrow and the day after, representatives of Bloomberg Philanthropies will be here in Aurora to meet with city officials and residents as they work to choose the most engaged city in the world. The winning city will be announced in October. This couldn't be possible without our wonderful Neighborhood Group Support Team, Cheryl Marafio, Karina Garcia, David Smith. If they can all come down, let's give them a round of applause. The Mayor's Award of Excellence to our stalwart members of the Neighborhood Group Support Team, led by Cheryl Marafio, working in tandem with Karina Garcia and David Smith. And our Community Services Department, our chief community services officer, Dan Barrero, is here as well. Please give him a round of applause. Come on down, Dan. All of these grants and these opportunities wouldn't be possible without a stalwart grant writer that we have in Mr. John Russell, who rounds out the community services team. Coming down, Mr. John Russell. Big round of applause for our Neighborhood Group Support Team. Thank you. We look forward to the outcome of the next two days, to be named, to be named the, be named the most engaged city in the world in October. Thank you so much, Cheryl Marafio and the entire team.
Wait, let me say that one more time, the most engaged city in the world.
Yes.
The whole world.
Something happened here. We're in the top 10, and we know we're going to keep on moving up higher. Our next recipients tonight, ones here, or the chief couldn't make it, are both of our chiefs of, of public safety, our chief of police and chief of fire department. They're very much part of the reason why we are so engaged here in the city. Chief Zeman couldn't make it tonight, but we recognize her this evening for being inducted into the Wabansee Community College Hall of Fame for 2019. Give her a round of applause. Our department's fire department is here, and last year, he was inducted into his alma mater, Wabansee Valley High School's Hall of Fame. Let's give him a round of applause. And that's not why we're here, he keeps doing great work. Tonight, we are honoring our fire chief, because this spring, he earned his bachelor's degree in Public Safety Management from S.I.U. Carbondale. Yes. He's been the example for all of his team. And he was selected by the S.I.U. Carbondale Administration to lead the class of 2019 in the graduation processional because of his stalwart efforts here in the city of Aurora. Big round of applause for A.F.D. Fire Chief Gary Prentice. A lot of staff happening here. Tonight, we also honor one of our very own Aurora police officers. Please join me in welcoming to the front Aurora Police Officer Douglas Rashkow. Tonight, Douglas is receiving two awards, not only the Mayor's Award of Excellence, but he's also being recognized by the Illinois State Bar Association with this year's Law Enforcement Award. To present, to present the ISBA, if you can hold on with the pictures, please, to present the ISBA third, uh, ISBA award, the third vice president from the ISBA is here. Please welcome Mr. Rory Wyler. Making the trip here to honor Douglas Rashkow. We're going to turn the mic there over to Mr. Wyler, as he makes the official presentation on behalf of the Illinois State Bar Association.
Good evening, everyone, Mayor Irvin, members of the city council. I am Rory Wyler, the third vice president of the Illinois State Bar Association, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to present this award to Officer Rashkow this evening. The State Bar Association's Law Enforcement Award recognizes excellence among our law, excellence among, among our law enforcement community, and particularly recognizes those who promote justice, honor, and dignity in the criminal justice system. Officer Rashkow is being honored with the 2019 Law Enforcement Award in recognition of his diligent community service, his advocacy for domestic violence victims, and his work with senior citizens of our community. For 12 years, Officer Rashkow served on the APD's Community Oriented Policing Program, building bridges with the youth and other members of the community, between the community and the police department. And he continues in some capacity, uh, doing so today, continuing to build and strengthen the relationships which he's worked so diligently on for the last 12 years. For five years, Officer Rashkow served on the Domestic Violence Unit of the Aurora Police Department, uh, wherein he was a tireless advocate for victims of domestic violence, and created educational programs for the children and other members of the community so that they could be made aware of the insidious nature of this type of activity. During his tenure on that, uh, task force, Officer Rashkow served as the Kane County Law Enforcement Education Committee Chairman to the 16th Judicial Circuit's Family Violence Coordinating Council, and did yeoman's work, again, on behalf of the victims of domestic violence. Once again, notably in Officer Rashkow's career, in 2009, he brought the idea of crisis team intervention to, uh, the Aurora Police Department to use in situations where officers are confronted with, uh, potential individuals who might have mental health issues or mental illnesses. And throughout his work with that particular entity, um, he worked tirelessly for the, um, on behalf of de-stigmatizing, uh, mental illness to those folks, uh, who were at risk and, and brought some relief to their families as well. Officer Rashkow, throughout his career, has, um, embodied what the ISBA's Law Enforcement Award is all about. And on behalf of the 30,000 members of the Illinois State Bar Association, we're very happy to honor Officer Douglas Rashkow with our 2019 Law Enforcement Award.
Big round of applause to Officer Doug Rashkow. And all the council members who are attorneys, please step on down. All the attorneys, come on down. And our Corporation Council, Assistant Corporation Council, all the, all the attorneys, come on down. Another big round of applause, Officer Doug Rashkow, recognized by the Illinois State Bar Association for his work here in the city of Aurora. Doug, you bring it all the Alderman down, they're all coming down for you, Officer Rashkow. This is the first, man. Big round of applause. Very beloved here in the city of Aurora. His work definitely precedes him.
Actually, I am a little bit shy. I am surprised and so honored by this, but anything that I've accomplished has been part of a bigger machine. It's never been me or about me. It's the partners that we have from our communities, from service agencies, from our officers, and it's the city council and the police department that have allowed me the opportunity to be able to do these things. I don't do them alone. It is part of a bigger partnership, a community response to solving problems. So, thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, Officer Doug Rashkow. Mayor, we have one final presentation. We're almost done, everyone. We didn't do any last meetings, I'll make it up for us. Officer Rashkow was recommended for this award at the ISBA by our own Assistant Corporation Council, Deborah Lang. Let's give her a round of applause. Thanks for the recommendation. Only a few lawyers will ever get the opportunity to argue before the U.S. Supreme Court. Every year, however, a group of lawyers join the Supreme Court Bar, the group of lawyers allowed to practice before the nation's highest court. Well, on May 3rd in Washington, D.C., one of our very own right here was inducted into the United States Supreme Court Bar, was joined by special guest, United States Supreme Court Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg. Tonight, we are honored that she is on our team. Supreme Court Bar member, please give a round of applause to our very own Assistant Corporation Council, Deborah Lang. All the way up to federal bar. Taking out with Ruth Bader Ginsburg. The work that she does. Still finding time to give back to the community, to honor Rashkow, who has always poured into this city. Supreme Court Bar, everybody, you clever, like I said, something else. The Supreme Court Bar, Deborah Lang. Thank you. She told me I had to keep it brief, so that was, that was working. That concludes the presentation.
That concludes the presentations. Let's go on to public comment. Madam clerk, do we have any members of the public wishing to offer public comment?
Yes, we do, Mayor. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, all persons shall be permitted an opportunity to address public officials under the rules established and recorded by the council. Under our rules, any person may address the city council for up to three minutes, with a maximum of 30 minutes allotted for all public comment. No person, other than the timekeeper or the chair for the purpose of maintaining order, may interrupt a person recognized for public comment during his or her comments. Members of the city council shall not engage with nor respond to a speaker during the time set aside for a public comment. Staff is directed to follow up with members of the public with respect to any concerns raised during raised during public comment within the scope of the city's authority following the adjournment of this meeting.
Clerk, can you call the first speaker?
Mary Ann Vincent.
Ms. Vincent, you have three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Irvin, City Council.
You know, before we get, I'm sorry, Ms. Vincent, you know what? Stop that clock for me for a second. Um, you know, I know we have a lot of folks here that, um, you know, probably about to start the regular business, that probably had to get on to something else before we get started. So before Ms. Vincent starts speaking, why don't I give you the opportunity to leave if you choose to? You can sit here, uh, through the rest of the meeting, but if you want to leave, if you can. No one ever takes me up on that, uh, offer to stay. Next time, next time. All right, Clerk, can you restart the, um, council? Can you restart the clock for the three minutes? Ms. Vincent, you have three minutes.
All right. Again, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Mayor Irvin, City Council. Um, I had intended to speak about the, um, shooting and the money raised, and I still want to add that I think it's unfortunate that as that money started coming in, it wasn't given to the families. Having, having suffered through a tragedy, a death, uh, money's needed right away, and I still think it's very unfortunate it took this long. And second, um, in our civilized society, I assume most of us believe in being courteous. Pursuant to the Open Meetings Act, there are stated rules about three minutes per person, and that no person from the City Council shall respond during the public comment time. Mayor Irvin, as a member of the City Council, uh, why didn't this apply to you? Last, two weeks ago, I, um, shared and, and others did in support of Wayside, and you showed discourteous behavior. I have been to numerous council meetings. I am probably not an unfamiliar face to those of you who have been an Alderman for a while. I've never, no mayor, no, no one has ever responded during public comment time. You defended yourself, emphasizing child molesters during the public comment time. And for those who were here two weeks ago, you might remember my comments when I, uh, shared for the first time in public, a trusted person molested a child of ours, and it has had a far-reaching impact. In my opinion, it's been more horrific than the death of our son in 2005. Even so, we support Wayside. We support the mission of Wayside. Mayor Irvin, you didn't hear from, you said you didn't hear from families. We heard from our family. Our family was a representative family. And I felt dishonored when you said you didn't hear from any families. It was a very vulnerable thing, like I've never shared this publicly. And, um, an elected official, official is someone who should show respect and speak in a civil manner to everyone. The office of the mayor should set a standard for decorum and dignity to all. Thank you.
Clerk, do we have any additional speakers?
No more speakers, Mr. Mayor.
All right, well then, let's go on to the consent agenda. Clerk, now please read the consent agenda in full.
Item 19-0015, an ordinance amending Chapter 2, Article 3, Division 2 of the Code of the City of Aurora pertaining to the ethical standards of the city's officers and employees, and creating Chapter 15 of the Code of the City of Aurora, restating and amplifying those standards. Item 19-0394, a resolution authorizing the extension of the Sales Tax Revenue Sharing Agreement, R10-396 with Pacifica Square LLC, formerly Yorkshire Plaza, and the City of Aurora for the facilitation of a lease renewal for a major anchor bus by. Item 19-0464, a resolution authorizing a contract with the Law Office of Victor Puskas for the professional services of an administrative hearing officer. Item 19-0507, a resolution with respect to the preliminary meeting materials available to members of the City Council. Item 19-0510, a resolution authorizing a two-year grant in the amount of $27,500 per year in partnership with Rebuilding Together Aurora and the Neighbor Project to assist qualified residents with projects in the third ward. Item 19-0539, a resolution appointing Shawida Bade, Sunil Patel, Nadia Kanai, Ajay Jain, and Sunkaya Ranjarajan, and reappointing Sanjeev Pandey, Rupa Anjanadha, Anupama Sadi, Galtham Batia, Sharon Garcia, Kunal Majmundar, Ashak Iswaran, and Sandeep Landi to the Indian American Community Outreach Advisory Board. Item 19-0543, a resolution to accept the request to extend the current contract for enterprise leasing of Chicago, 1050 Lombard Road, Lombard, Illinois, for a three-year vehicle rental agreement for the Aurora Police Department. Item 19-0551, a resolution for accepting the improvements and maintenance security for Lehigh Station, Unit 3, Lot 6. Item 19-0552, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an intergovernmental agreement with the County of DuPage for the shared enforcement of the City of Aurora Ethics Ordinance. Item 19-0556, a resolution authorizing the purchase of eight additional replacement squad cars with the Aurora Police Department from Curry Motors, using the Suburban Purchasing Cooperative in the amount of $296,784. Item 19-0567, a resolution authorizing a contract with Brand Escavating Incorporated in the amount of $269,311 and 0 cents for the South River Street Sewer Separation Project located in Ward 4. Item 19-0568, a resolution authorizing a contract with H. Linden &amp; Sons &amp; Water Incorporated in the amount of $213,321 and 0 cents for the Rosedale Liberty and San Soucy Storm Sewer Extension Project located in Wards 5 and 7. Item 19-0572, a resolution authorizing a contract with the office, with the Law Office of Mark K. Wade for the professional services of an administrative hearing officer. Item 19-0577, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to execute the Engineering Services Agreement with the Santa Cruz Land Acquisitions and to appropriate motor fuel tax funds for the East New York Street Segment 3, Farnsworth Avenue to Welsh Drive Project, Section 14-00210-02-PV. Item 19-0583, a resolution amending the redevelopment agreement between the City of Aurora and ADI South River LLC for the redevelopment of ADI South River Street. Item 19-0584, a resolution authorizing the Director of Purchasing to enter into an agreement with Abbey Paving and Seal Coating Company Incorporated, 1949 County Line Road, Aurora, Illinois, 60502, in the amount of $949,031 and 25 cents for improvements to Parking Lot E, located east of Broadway between New York Avenue and Galena Boulevard. Item 19-0585, a resolution to award the contract for Benton and Stolt Intersection Improvements to Martum Construction Incorporated, 1200 Gasket Drive Elgin, Illinois, 60120, in the amount of $540,854.
There's been a motion to approve the consent agenda made by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Garza. Are, before we entertain that motion, um, are there any motions to remove or any questions on anything on the consent agenda? With a motion and a second, will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas? Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Danelle?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
10 As.
Motion carried. The consent agenda is approved. Clerk, will you, let's go on to unfinished business. Will you, Clerk, read, please read the title of the ordinance.
Item 19-0573, an ordinance proposing the creation of a business district in the City of Aurora and the establishment of a public hearing in connection with the same. Yorkshire Plaza slash Route 59 Business District Number 1.
The public hearing is now open. The public hearing is now open? All right, I would like to request, I would like to request the motion to continue this public hearing until Tuesday, August 13th, City Council Meeting at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Garza, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried by voice vote. Public hearing is continued until August 13th. Alderman Franco, do you have a question? Is there anyone that can explain from staff why we're doing this?
Alderman, uh, just in order to make sure of full compliance with the open meetings agenda.
All right, let's go on to new business. Is there a motion to spin rules to consider items on new business? Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Garza. The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Danelle?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
10 As.
Motion carries. Tonight, I am announcing the availability of the redevelopment plan and project and eligibility study for the proposed Galena Broadway TIF District. The documents are on file at the, in the City Clerk's office and are available for public review. With this announcement, the city begins the formal process of creating the proposed TIF District, which will include mailed notices, published notices, a joint review board, meeting, and public hearings. The tentative schedule anticipates that the proposed TIF District will be created in early 2020. Will the clerk please read the title of the first announcement?
Item 19-0586, introduce announcement of the availability of the eligibility study and report and the redevelopment plan and project for the proposed TIF, Galena slash Broadway.
Next item. Similar to the previous item, once again, no action need be taken on that last one. Similar to the previous item, once again, tonight I am announcing the availability of the redevelopment plan and project and eligibility study for the proposed River Benton TIF District. The documents are on file in the City Clerk's office and are available for public review. With this announcement, the city begins the formal process of creating the TIF District, a proposed TIF District, which will include mailed notices, published notices, a joint review board meeting, and public hearings. T tentative schedule anticipates the proposed TIF District will be created in early 2020. Will the clerk please read the title of the second announcement?
Item 19-0590, introduce the announcement of the availability of the eligibility study and report and the redevelopment plan and project for the proposed TIF, River slash Benton TIF.
All right, no action need be taken. The requests and referrals listed on the agenda are referred to the Planning Council and Planning Commission. Is there a motion to accept and file?
Second.
The treasurer's report? Been a motion by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Garza? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries by voice vote. Is there a motion to approve and pay the bills listed on the agenda? Motion made by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Garza. Are there any questions or discussions on the bills? The clerk, please call the roll.
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Danelle?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
10 As.
Motion carries. The bills are approved. We are in need of a closed session immediately following the meetings, this, this meeting to discuss matters relating to the purchase or lease of real property for the use of the city pursuant to 5 ILCS 120 slash 2C5 of the Open Meetings Act. Is there a motion to go into closed session at the end of the agenda? There's been a motion made by Alderman Hartburns, seconded by Alderman Garza. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderman Garza?
Yes.
Alderman Masiacos? I'm sorry. Alderman Danelle?
Yes.
Alderman Franco?
Yes.
Alderman Seville?
Yes.
Alderman Hartburns?
Yes.
Alderman Smith?
Yes.
Alderman Bug?
Yes.
Alderman Lobshi?
Yes.
Alderman O'Connor?
Yes.
10 As.
Motion carries. There being no further business to come before the council, is there a motion to adjourn? There's been a motion made by Alderman Hartburns, second by Alderman Franco. All in favor?
Aye.
All righty, we're done.